Called the meeting to order as a special work session, meeting with the budget vote at the end of the meeting. Welcome each and every one of you here tonight. We are, while we don't have the pledge of allegiance on our order tonight, we are going to stand and have the pledge of allegiance. Please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion to approve our current agenda? Mr. Manning, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Ms. Elvis Johnson? Okay. There she is. Okay, you can vote now. Yes. That'd be fine. Um, come on. Would you like to do the introductions? Uh, Mr. Manning would like to make an introduction of a special guest.
I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Dixon, if you wouldn't mind standing for us. Thank you very much for coming out tonight.
Okay, is everybody almost there? It's already done, it's already done. Thank you very much. Okay, um, tonight we're having a bud- a work session, a budget work session, um, to, um, to approve, to get to our final approval of our budget for the 2013-2014 season. I'd sort of like to do this in a way that we can, um, uh, do it hopefully in about an hour's time, as far as discussion, and then make some motions after that. Hopefully we can do it fast enough, who knows? If that's okay with you, with everyone, that'll give everybody about eight to ten minutes to, to make a comment if they'd like to, uh, or to discuss the budget. And then after the discussion and the work session, we will make a motion. All right, so I'll open, we failed to, uh, to come to an agreement last, at the last call meeting, last, uh, last Tuesday, so I'm gonna open the floor up for discussion. Anyone at this time like to take the floor? Sure.
And this might be something that, um, Mr. Jackson was talking about in his email, uh, about the IT, um, positions, and he had mentioned, and we had talked about, that they, these positions would be filled through attrition, is that correct?
That's correct. That's what I was asking for, Ms. Brill.
And, and my question, as part of your question, is what's the reality of that? And who can address that? Debbie?
Well, the, the initial discussion had been attrition and looking at growth. And just to maintain our current service levels, we need one additional IT position for the tech, for a technician, just to stay where we are. And we, with the addition of CFK North, and we need to have a position to serve as an instructional technology specialist. But the other pieces of this really are sort of twofold, I would say. One of them is that the service levels that the schools expect is increasing pretty dramatically. The tool, the technology as a tool, has become so important that downtime is disruptive in the classroom now, which is a good problem to have, but we really need to improve our service level. So the other additional, um, positions would be improvements over our current service levels.
So I see a total here of seven. It looks like there are seven positions that we're talking about. Um, you know, that's a large chunk of that, um, of that nine mils.
One of the most critical pieces is to have somebody full-time at the high schools. And we believe with the addition of four positions, we could at least meet that requirement.
So does that get us from seven to six?
That gets us from s- from seven technicians to four technicians plus an ITS, so it gives us to five total positions.
Five total, okay.
The other piece in that line item that is very important are the additional days for the instructional technology specialists. That was six days for elementary, eight days for middle, and ten days for high school.
Uh-huh.
And because our students don't have those computers over the summer, we use that as a time to collect them, inventory, and make sure they're all running and ready for the next school year. With our transients, we also don't want them to disappear over the summer. There, there needs to be a time at the end of the school year for an ITS to collect all of those and process the end of the year, and to also make sure everything's ready for the beginning of the next school year. And in addition to that, we add, you know, hundreds of new faculty members, and as they're being hired during the summer, technology is so important in their roles, we need those ITS to provide professional development, to help get them up to speed and be ready to use one-to-one computing in their classrooms. So those ITS days are important, um, for management, as well as to make sure our teachers are ready for the opening of school.
So I guess my next question is for Mr. Davis. If we're going from seven to five, how does that reduce this line item here? About what, what amount? Cause you know, tonight's dollars and cents.
Yes, technician salary and benefits.
So did I understand currently you're saying, instead of the seven that's requested on the twelve mil, you're only requesting five mil?
Well, seven would be wonderful, but I know the hard decisions you're making, and when push comes to shove, we're willing to make some compromises to provide at least some relief to the schools.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, thank you very much. First, first of all, I, and maybe I'm counting you incorrectly, but I'm counting eight, number one, because I'm counting the technology integration specialist as, as one of those, and then maybe that's a different conversation. But secondly, um, my request was not to, uh, not to fund positions and, uh, and to create the needed IT positions throughout the campus, uh, throughout the, um, the district. My request was to do it, uh, uh, through means of attrition. And so if it's a budget priority and it's important enough to, uh, have it, then it becomes a priority over another position. And so I think the conversation also needs to e- evolve and to include, uh, HR and Mr. Garrett to tell, tell us what unfilled positions exist, because this conversation is about funding five new positions. I ask, I'm not opposed to funding IT positions, I'm not opposed to the spreading out as you've described them, Dr. Hamm. My question is, can they not be done with existing dollars? That's all. I'm not asking you not to have the positions, I'm asking that the budget be revised so that the existing dollars come from, uh, the current budget without this increase of additional funds for these new positions. And when I mentioned this three or four years ago, maybe five years ago now, I never added the caveat that it would include enrollment growth. I think Mr. Garrett and others will remember, I was very specific about these positions being funded as a result of attrition, period, not and in, in, in enrollment growth. So I just wanna sort of be real clear about what I was stating early on, and now, that I'm not opposed to positions, I'm asking that the funding be identified through the existing dollars that we have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think I understood you. Yeah, I was trying to remember what you said four years ago.
Yes, sir.
I think that's the reason I'm, it got me going.
Yes, sir.
It wasn't, it wasn't what you just said, I was trying to relate back.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, do, do we have any kind of answer for that, Mr. Garrett, Mr. Davis?
On the ITS positions?
On can, you know, are we in a place to fund those positions, uh, not part of this budget growth, but part of current budget?
Ms. Manning, do you want my official chief financial officer to answer a question?
I want the actual answer, whatever that is.
Two hundred and fourteen million dollar budget as we have for the current fiscal year. Could we in fact, if we had the maneuvering room to perhaps add some of these positions within the current budget? The answer is, based on past experience, the answer is yes. Now, my favorite expression is, how lucky do I feel? And as the chief financial officer, we've been very fortunate each year to finish the year with a positive, revenues exceeding expenditures. There are a host of factors that go into that, hence the how lucky do I feel? Uh, I, actually, I'm feeling luckier by the day right now, but, uh, I think, I think we could do it, but you are pushing the envelope. The prudent thing, if it's a recurring positions for recurring expenditures, it is the prudent thing to go ahead and put it in the base budget. That would be my answer.
But you haven't answered my question, and my question is, are there any unused, unfilled FTEs that could be used? That's my question.
On the first step.
Right, and that's why I said a minute ago.
And I would have to research that, because I wasn't prepared to answer that question at this point in time.
That's what I'm suggesting, Mr. Chairman, we look at first, because if they are, rather than assign those unused FTEs, if this is a priority, let the priority then be to fund them with these FTEs, that's what I'm, I'm requesting.
That's what I always understood your position to be.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Manning, did I answer your question?
Yeah.
As basically as I could, as is available.
You answered the question, and, uh, Mr. Jackson has a more specific question about existing FTEs. My, my question was, do we have the, you answered my question, which was, do we have the budget to do the positions? It, it may be, um, and I don't know if, if Mr. Jackson amenable to, if we don't do it as part of this budget and we decrease it to the minimum that we need, can we get the majority out of that, out of existing FTEs? And if we needed one or two others, could we find a way out of the existing budget to do that? And would that meet, uh, Mr. Jackson's request, um, and, and still kind of get us where we need to be? And Mr. Jackson, I, I mean, feel free to answer that, um, you're trying to meet the spirit of, of your request and, and still get us where I feel like we need to go with those positions.
And I'm simply trying to be a good steward of, of the community's dollars and the funds we have, and, and opportunities for filling positions, uh, as I've stated for the last four years, and I haven't deviated from that.
Right.
And so, if Mr. Garrett is the one who needs to answer the question for me, that's sort of where I am right now. How many unfilled FTEs are available that can be assigned or reassigned to fill these critically needed ITS positions? That's really where I'm at right now.
Mr. Garrett, is that a position we can get this evening, or?
I'd put it like this, um, Mr. Jackson and Mr. Manning, I have not seen any of our principals or any of our departments come forth giving up FTEs, but we do have them coming forth asking for FTEs. So as far as FTEs that won't be used, that are in the current budget this year, I know of none.
Are these school FTEs or are these district FTEs we're talking about? So you said principals, wouldn't these be?
Both.
Okay, would these be?
So you, you want district FTEs or?
I was only responding to what you just said when you mentioned principals, I, I was trying to broaden the conversation and say, well, FTEs are at the school level, but they're also at the district level, is what I was trying to say.
Right.
So are the?
Right.
Are the FTEs that you're requesting, Debbie, which, which ones are we requesting here?
The request is for four technicians, one instructional technology specialist.
Is that in the schools or for here in the district?
Instructional technology specialists are assigned to schools. This particular ITS is to serve centers and would be itinerant, and one of those centers would be the sort of homeschool for the instructional technology specialist. We need that person to help at CFK North, so that would probably be the homeschool. The instruct, the technicians, um, we assign time slices to schools, which is basically half-day or quarter-day periods of time, and depending on the school's size, you get a certain number of time slices, that you get a technician at your school to be repairing computers, et cetera. And so the goal with these technicians is to be able to give high schools enough time slices that they would be full-time at the high schools.
I think the question is, is that a district, uh, office position, like funded, or is that funded through, at the school level?
They come, they're from the district. The position for ITS is allocated to the school, they report to the school principal, but like other positions, the district provides that funding. The technicians are district technicians, and we assign who fills those time slices and goes where from the district level.
So in other words, the, the, what we're requesting, I guess I'm trying to get at, and what I understand the question to be is, it, the positions that we're asking to be given up, it, are we asking, I mean, is the only way to do it, the principals have to give up a staffing position, or are there other?
No, it can be done here at the district level also.
Right, I think that was what we were asking, are there positions at the district level that are?
Okay, at this point in time, and, uh, please, Mr. Davis, jump in, and Ms. Mallett, we have folks retiring, but as far as those positions, I think in finance, there are plans to rehire, and in academics, there are plans to rehire. So as far as those positions, those people retiring and those positions not being filled, that is not the plan at this point in time. So there is no attrition.
I have a question then, if we have a carryover every year, and eighty-five percent is, is, is personnel, where, that's gotta be where it's coming from, where are those, where's the savings coming from? Okay, just a question. We've had a couple of questions here, if I can go back and try to think of first, okay. Ms. Manning, your question was the, the cost for a IT technician, it's thirty-eight thousand dollars, including benefits, is a nice average number for an IT technician. Uh, that was one question. Uh, and back to, for the benefit of our newest board member, and for the benefit of the audience, uh, how we finish the year? Obviously, the finance staff working with our departments and our schools looks very hard at our revenues and expenditures, particularly as we get down to the end of the year, trying to make it where we do hit it, where revenues do exceed expenditures. But as, as the board members are well aware, the auditors show up, uh, in September to come in and audit our books, and it's December first before we have a formal report due as to actually how we finish the year. So there are a number of things that could conceivably happen, and I'm looking at my finance folks, that, uh, are in question potentially. So that's why I can't give you a precise number, uh, and one of your colleagues, years ago, one of your former colleagues, used to ask me on July first, what's the carry for it gonna be? I do remember that. You recall some, right? It's just darn difficult to, to do that. But that's the problem with forecasting a number, until we go through all the records and all the bills, uh, you, you've got a challenge there. And we won't know with certainty, probably till October, that's how we'll know. But our practice has been, and it's worked well for us, we have finished generally a million to two million to the good of average, and a million to a million dollars is a ton of money. On the other hand, when you talk about a two hundred and fourteen million dollar budget, it's less than one percent, which is about as close as we could hit it and still come out on the right side of the number, which has been our, our marching orders from the board, to come out on the right side of the numbers. I'm sorry, Dr. Fleming, you have? But still, but still, eighty-five percent of that is, is, has to come from? The way, the, generally the way we've finished the year to the good, the answer hasn't been that we had FTEs that we didn't fill, that really wasn't it. Generally, what we lucked out, we don't luck out, let me rephrase that for the benefit of all. Generally, what we found is revenues from the state have exceeded the budgeted revenues that we've looked at. Generally, that's the way it's worked. And we've also come in generally right at or slightly low on the expenditures that we've budgeted, though the combination of the two is how we've been fortunate to finish with a positive, uh, fund balance each year for the last fifteen years. Actually, there was one year we didn't, recall? Oh, three.
Well, that's what.
That's when we had two mid-year budget cuts, uh, for the first time, oh, three, yes, ma'am, sure was.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that, from what I'm hearing, unless I'm mistaken, you know, we're, we're sort of in this difficult place that, um, on one hand, uh, we have basically a board request to not grow these positions, to use existing FTEs and dollars to get this done, and it sounds to me that the district is saying, we don't have that room to do this, yet we have the one-to-one in place and a need there. And I'm not sure how we rectify from, or, or get from here to there with, with that situation, and Mr. Jackson, not, um?
Well, Mr. Manning, what I thought I heard was, we could do it, but there are plans for positions that are either vacant or becoming vacant, and so then the question becomes, what takes priority if we don't increase the budget? Uh, there are positions in academics that we have plans for, there are positions in finance that we have plans for. So I don't hear that there aren't any FTEs available, I hear that there are plans for those FTEs that are gonna become available, and we don't wanna use them for the IT positions, is what I think I'm hearing.
Well, and, and you're, you're correct, Mr. Jackson, thank you, that's, that's why I was saying, maybe I didn't hear right, so. But, but if, if the district decides not to fund these positions, we're in a, then we're in a difficult position, because we certainly, I think we have the need, again, maybe not for all of them, as, as Dr. Hamm indicated, we might be able to deal with, with some less, but our teachers are asking to free up these ITS positions so they can have better opportunities in the classroom, um, you know, for using the technology that they have, we, we're growing in schools, um, you know, I, I think, can it be district office, and I'm putting this out there as a whole, that we can find a way to maneuver some of these positions to meet that need? Cause it seems to me that that is a immediate need that we have in our schools, to support the one-to-one, which we've all been supportive of as a board and a district. I mean, we can't sit here and not have answers, we gotta get this worked out, we have to make commitments on our side and on the district's side.
I wanna make sure I'm clear, um, Dr. Hamm, help me if you can, if you will. Currently, if I were to pick Blackwood High School, do they have a IT person at Blackwood High School now that does nothing but IT? Does that position exist?
At Blackwood High School, they have an instructional technology specialist who helps with the instructional part of this, and they have four half-days of a technician.
And so for Blackwood High School, how would they be impacted by this request?
They would be impacted by that request, that they would have somebody there full-time, five days a week.
So if that person is there full-time, five days a week, and nothing to do, what would we do then?
Well, I'm sure that there are other places that person could help, but?
Are you meaning other schools, or other, when you say other?
I meant, I'm thinking of, you know, if, if they were needed at other schools and they had nothing to do, there would be plenty to do. There, there's always a computer that needs something somewhere in the school district. But in the, our high schools are large enough that there is almost always something. We've been pretty deliberate in trying to, um, sort of be conservative, actually, in the way we've, um, effectively used resources. We've selected computers that sort of minimize the amount of time, technician time that it takes. We have, have used student interns to ease some of the burden, so we've tried to use some strategies that would be low or no cost, but we, I, you know, if you look at the survey information that we get back, or talk to the people who are frontline working in schools, they say, we, you know, we really need this, and we need it for two reasons. We need it so students don't experience downtime with an essential tool, and we need it so that the instructional technology specialist, if people really want to be working with teachers and coaching and professional development, so teachers use this wisely in the classroom, aren't having to do, spend time troubleshooting computers, or helping kids who, um, are having difficulty accessing app or something like that.
Can you tell me what percentage of the day that the ITS is troubleshooting with teachers or in the schools? I'm just curious.
We have a ITS here, do you mind telling us what percentage of your day right now you're spending?
Um, I'm a Western High School student, my name is Brittany, and I spend approximately forty-five percent of my day just working on the, the technical part of it, not the instruction.
What are you doing with your?
And what does that entail?
Cause we have a product that's not working correctly.
We have high school students who have high motor skills who may not, you know, who may not treat an item as well as we would like them to.
So it's not so much that we don't have somebody there that can fix it, it's, the students aren't taking care of the software or well, the computers itself.
Um, if you, if it's localized, uh, you know, it's, it's, you know, I have a, for instance, or have, or have.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, since I've been raising the issue primarily. Um, I, I would like to, um, in this cat, particular category, um, ask that, um, the budget be revised to reflect, um, a total of four positions, and Dr. Hamm described five, but a total of four positions, and, uh, and then the same coverage be provided, uh, and if any additional coverage is needed, that it be provided through some form of attrition.
I was stuck with that motion, but I'd like to make amendment to it.
We're not, we're not making, we're just, we're gonna write these down. We're writing this down. No, we're not.
So four, he said four?
Four, total of four, yes.
She said five.
That's correct.
For IT positions, I'm just saying, what about the, um, what about the school, uh, what about the ITS position?
Chairman, did, did I not hear, um, Dr. Hamm, did, did you say professional development with ITS, correct?
ITS does provide professional development.
Is there a way that we can fund that through any of our existing grants or other opportunities that we have that talk about professional development to?
Most of the money that we have access to, Mr. Manning, is designated for professional development, for teacher, understanding their content, their pedagogy, and that kind of thing. Um, we would have to look carefully at how we structure that, but I know there is a big push for Common Core, and we've got a math coordinator who is retiring, and we're, we really need that, that particular position, um, but we can certainly look and see.
Now, I would think that this is pedagogy, right? If we're talking about teachers being able to use the tools, that that would squarely fall in that category. And, uh, you know, I know that, that we, as a board, have been very dedicated to professional development, and we have money through grants and lots of other opportunities, I, I mean, it seems to me we might be able to find some funds to provide that through some of our, our grants or other professional development.
And let me just make, make this clear, I, I apologize, Mr. Manning, um, we cannot use any of those funds, Title II, or the lottery, or professional development for salaries. We can use it for professional development, but we cannot use it for salaries.
If I understood Dr. Hamm correctly, she said a moment ago, that basically there are at least halftime positions at the high schools, I specifically asked about Blackwood, but I assume that it's true across?
I think she said, basically it was two days a week, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's, it's four half-days.
Four half-days, yeah, yeah. Four half-days, two whole days, and so that's where I can't, that's where my logic came from, with then, instead of five or seven positions, can't cut seven in half, I could have said three point five, which would have been half, take the half with the new funds, take the current half you have, then it makes for a whole position, if I'm hearing you correctly. If you've got a halftime position at the school now, I don't see a need for a whole-time position, a whole fully-funded FTE, but instead a half FTE, that's what I'm looking at.
Mr. Jackson, I wasn't trying to, um, go against you with that, I was just asking about the ITS, and we find some other alternatives.
No, no, I'm, I'm just trying, and I'm just trying to move us along, Mr. Man-
And, you know, I know that, that we, as a board, have been very dedicated to professional development, and we have money through grants and lots of other opportunities. I mean, it seems to me we might be able to find some funds to provide that through some of our grants or other professional development.
And let me just make, make this clear, I apologize, Mr. Manning. Um, we cannot use any of those funds, Title II, or the lottery, or professional development for salaries. We can use it for professional development, but we cannot use it for salaries.
If I understood Dr. Hamm correctly, she said a moment ago that, basically, there are at least halftime positions at the high schools. I specifically asked about Blackwood, but I assume that it's true across...
I think she said, basically, it was two days a week, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's, it's four half-days.
Four half-days, yeah, yeah. Four half-days, two whole days, and so that's where I came, that's where my logic came from, with then, instead of five or seven positions, can't cut seven in half, I could have said three point five, which would have been half. Take the half with the new funds, take the current half you have, then it makes for a whole position. If I'm hearing you correctly, if you've got a halftime position at the school now, I don't see a need for a whole-time, a whole, fully-funded FTE, but instead a half FTE, that's what I'm looking at.
Mr. Jackson, I wasn't trying to go against you with that, I was just asking about the ITS, and we find some other alternatives.
No, no, I'm, I'm just trying, and I'm just trying to move us along, Mr. Manning.
Yeah, I appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Yes, sir.
I, I just want to make sure you're clear, they aren't halftime positions. It's, it's a full-time position that gets shared.
Shared, and this would be another full-time position that also gets shared. And now that two shared, two positions are being shared at Blackwood, it ends up being equivalent to one full-time position, that's where I'm coming from.
So how does the other forty-five, or forty, whatever? What was it? What was it, forty-five percent?
Forty-five, or, spending her time.
Was it forty-five percent of the time is spent on?
Yes, it's forty-five percent of my time spent, yes, about forty-five percent of my time is spent just dealing with the technology part.
Could that be because that's just a new school, or is that across the board?
I don't see it being too much better, so it is.
So what are the other fifty-five percent?
I'm supposed to be doing instructional, the working of technical development, of the teachers, students, staff, and classroom.
That's the ITS position.
Oh, and... I thought we sent teachers, we... I know it's ongoing professional development, but for some reason, I thought at one point, we had teachers in every school doing ongoing, uh, professional development.
That's what this person is supposed to be doing, full-time, that's what the position is for. But, technology creep has meant that she has to...
Teacher, and she flips over and be an ITech person, too? Because I thought at one point...
They are certified teachers, but they're full-time instructional technology specialists. I may have misunderstood your question. The board kind of grew these positions over a number of years, I want to say it started out as a point-two-five, and then it went to a point-five. Over several years, it became a full-time position to support technology integration and to do professional development, to coach, et cetera. I mean, coaching in the classroom, not just doing workshops, but going in the class, working side-by-side with the teacher, as they're trying new technologies and to support them that way.
I, I think the confusion comes in...
What did Hamm used to do? Hamm, what did you used to do?
Um, I, I'm a technology integration specialist, so I work with...
Now, prior to whatever you are doing now, when we first started...
I was a fourth-grade teacher.
No, before, when we started out with technology, you were working with technology?
Correct.
And I thought you were in staff development, training the other teachers?
With technology, yes. That was before we had the instructional technology specialist in the school.
So now, we're, we're, I need to identify all of these different titles. Because I'm getting confused on the different titles you guys are using. So somebody run down to me each title, I'm gonna just have to stop signing these papers.
I'd be glad to do that, Mrs. Anderson.
I, I'm getting too many titles, and I don't know what all these titles are about. Um, I need to know what each title is and what their responsibilities are. Because we're getting too many titles.
We have technicians, and their role is to repair computers, install them. If they get moved around in buildings to do carpeting or whatever, to take care of those moves and get them back and up and running. So we have technicians. Those are non-certified individuals. And we actually have two levels of technicians, these are the lower level, they provide pretty basic services. The second term you heard was instructional technology specialist. That is a school position, it is a certified teacher, and their job description is to provide professional development and support to classroom teachers so that they can effectively integrate technology into teaching and learning. It's really important that they have that certification, they need to know curriculum, they need to know instruction, as Mr. Manning said, it is about pedagogy. We also have some people at the district level called technology integration specialists. That's what Mrs. Hamm planned is. And they provide district-level professional development, they do planning for our programs when it comes to instruction and implementing things.
As district tech.
District-wide. And they also focus on the instructional side of that, they don't do technician work. Did that help?
That's four different levels, right?
Three.
You have two tech and non-certified, two different levels there. One is a basic server, and the other one is, I don't know what he does, he or she. Because you said there were, um, two levels of techs. One, non-certified, and they just do basic services.
And if it's much more complicated, we have a second level of more experienced technicians.
So the first level just does the bare minimum of repairing technology?
It's pretty basic, but they, I mean, they're very helpful, and if you want more specifics about how those are differentiated, I'm sure Mr. Kramer could tell you.
No, I'm just trying to get a clear understanding, I don't care about how they do it, because I don't know how, I wouldn't know what they're doing anyway. But I just want to know why we have so, I want to know the different levels here. Now, we've got the instructional, um, uh, technician, that's the specialist, is a certified teacher, that does professional development. Now, what's the difference in that person doing professional development versus the district technician integration, integrated instructional, uh, development? What's the difference in those two?
The instructional technology specialist is in the school. So they do things like, as a fourth-grade team is planning instructional units, they could sit in and say, this is the place that technology can really help you with that. If I'm a classroom teacher, and I want to try something new, and I'm not sure if it'll work, the instructional technology specialist might go in and actually teach that class with the person, so they're comfortable with it. They are walking around the school trying to find what's going on, and any opportunity to help a teacher, and think about, you know, you could do this better if you use this kind of a technology. When new teachers are moving into the school, they provide the professional development to get them ready to go. So those are a few examples, and it is school level. At the district level, we do things like a summer conference, we have an online publication that has technology tips. We do courses, we have T for Two, we have professional development that we offer for all of our non-certified staff. Basic things like, like Word, or if we implement a new HR system, how do you enter your e-lea requests, those kinds of things.
How many of those?
So those are district-level people.
Okay, how many, uh, district-level people do we have?
We have four full-time people, and one part-time.
We have four district-level, and in the, uh, instructional, is it one per school, or how many do we have there?
Uh, we have one person per regular school for the instructional technology specialist. We have part-time people at the Center for Knowledge and the, um, Center for Inquiry. And then our district technology specialists right now. Those district people are trying to fill in as instructional technology specialists for the other centers.
So what we have identified on...
So that was the reason why we asked for an itinerant ITS. Um, because continuing to do that with another center, and with the increased demands for professional development, a center may need help, and our people are doing a course. So it hasn't been a very satisfactory model, they're not always available when they need to be, and they're, they're feeling spread pretty thin.
Do we have any type of evaluation that we get back from schools indicating maybe the amount of time that the ITS has spent in the classrooms, working with teachers? Um, anything that the teacher said that they could use more of, and the reason why they could really benefit from the ITS, and the amount of time that they spend working on professional development within the school setting? Do we have any type of evaluation?
I haven't collected the information on the specific amount of time. However, we have collected multiple sources of information about the perceived effectiveness of the instructional technology specialists. They're very highly rated by the teachers that they serve. And we also, um, do a needs assessment and collect information about what kinds of professional development they need. And then I guess the fourth piece that fits in with your question is, we did a budget survey and asked people, and these technicians were, the technicians in more professional development related to technology were the, by far, most frequently noted items that people wanted more of.
And this is teachers?
This, it goes out to everybody in the district, anybody who wants to respond. Um, Mr. Potts may remember the breakdown by teacher, did we look at it that way? Okay, sorry, we don't have...
Yeah, can we get a copy of the need base per school and the teacher survey?
You're talking about the needs assessment that we did for professional development?
Yes.
Okay, and the survey from the budget, okay.
Chairman, in the interest of following up with Ms. Anderson said earlier, um, would it be possible to simply, um, go with the, um, the four FTEs, do the math, and then, uh, if the district then needs to expand it, they would then find the funds from whatever existing sources to fund the additional one?
So you're saying increase the, uh, the base, the base budget by four?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, and, and leave the flexibility to the district to find, to find. I guess the only thing that troubles me, and I'll be real candid about it, and that is that, when I raised this issue several years ago, I thought we were collectively in agreement, board and, and staff, that any future position, when this first came up with one-to-one, any future IT-related positions would be funded through attrition. And I thought we all agreed to that, and so to hear now that that's not even possible, and there aren't any positions that, that we can, can reassign to make this happen, is a little bit surprising, because I remember us having a very specific and very direct conversation, and with me specifically asking, before I voted to approve the one-to-one with the huge price tags attached, that we would make sure that in going forward, that IT positions would be funded through attrition. And so I just want to sort of say that, and so even with that sort of surprise, I'm still willing to, to support what Ms. Anderson is saying, what I said earlier, Mr. Chairman. And also ask that the staffs continue to look at any unsigned FTEs to address any needs beyond the four funded. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
But, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask one question, because I asked a lot of questions at the last board meeting, and then I'll, my second question will be directly to you. But first, on here, on the exhibit, Mr. Davis, this is what I was gonna call you about today, on Exhibit D, where you had five, additional five full-time itinerant elementary assistant principals. And then you, they changed it on the, um, which mill increased, did it drop down to? Is it the twelve? Oh, yeah, it's right here on there. Then they dropped that down on the twelve millage to, um, two versus the five that's on our Exhibit D.
And Ms. Anderson, again, from Exhibit D, you're talking about the line that shows additional five FTOs for itinerant elementary assistant principals.
Right.
Right? And on the twelve-mill request, you see that additional five FTEs for itinerant elementary assistant principals. There is no change, there's still five IT FTEs.
On the one I have, I see this one, too.
Not on the one I have, it has two.
The difference is that this Exhibit D is basically a cumulative list of all the requests in totality. So, all of it is not funded, and we're able to put that T on there for what administration, government, we fund, have, developed, which are maximum.
So, so the elementary principals... The elementary principals requested enough assistant principals, so every school would have two. An administration put forward a budget where we would have two that would float amongst the five that we don't have.
I'm sorry, thank you, I stand corrected.
That is correct.
Okay, so those two will just float?
Thank you both.
Pardon me?
Have to share, yes, ma'am.
Have to share.
Two people will float eighteen schools?
No, no, ma'am, five schools, five schools do not have two assistant principals at them. And so, those five principals would work through using two FTEs to factor in a way to share that, to get...
What five schools are those?
Bookman, Nelson.
Cotava Trail, Bridge Creek, and Langford.
Langford, yeah. And they are the ones that currently are under six hundred students.
Bookman, Nelson, Bridge Creek, Cotava Trail, and Langford. So they would be sort of in the same area, so two people could travel within the five schools, it wouldn't be a long distance. Just travel for those two people. All right, now, um...
Have we moved off of the IT?
Huh?
Have you moved off the IT then?
Oh, I thought you were finished with it.
Oh, I want to make sure we are, because you're moving on, and I want to make sure.
Oh, were we not finished with the IT?
Yes.
Oh, you had a question, done. Oh, go ahead with your question, and I'll come back to you, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, how many funded IT positions, district-wide?
How many total IT positions?
No, I'm talking about the IT, the service for schools.
To the schools, we have eleven technicians.
That's what you're trying to increase here, you have eleven, okay, how many do we have when we started? One-to-one?
We added one when we opened the high school.
That was in the high school budget. So we haven't, except for growth, we have not added a position.
That wasn't, well, it was part of the budget that year, but we indicated that it was a technician for growth. It was listed as, my, my recollection...
Was it listed in your budget, or was it listed in Westwood's budget?
It was listed in, in our budget, that's my recollection of it. That it was listed, much like these were listed in what you're looking at now, a requested position for growth because of the opening of Westwood.
How's the other, we, but that's the only increase we've had.
Are you meaning since we started technology?
No, since we started the one-to-one.
A one-to-one, I'm sorry, I missed that, okay.
Um, I think you've answered my question about the itinerant position for the, um, so for knowledge, you know, it's not a... It's just, it's a share, it'll be a shared position, I think.
Chairman, unless I'm real confused, I thought we added several positions when we started one-to-one as a part of the one-to-one budget. We talked about having the need to have several startup positions in place to get it off the ground and running. Now, I don't recall us not adding any, am I missing something, Dr. Hamm?
Well, let me ask Mr. Kramer, and make sure that I'm remembering correctly, but after we started, I remember adding one.
So that's what I was, that's the only one I remember, is the one we've added for...
I know we provided some information showing what we would, might expect as an increase each year, but I'm, he will know for sure, I want to make sure we give you the correct information.
We, we, when we started the one-to-one program, we had ten technicians total. And, uh, through growth, we've added one technician, that brings us to a total that we have today, which is eleven. But if you go back to the original documents that we presented to the school board, uh, in, as a proposal for the one-to-one, we had projected positions out in the future, uh, in the later phases that we expected would be required based on adding more than twenty thousand devices into the schools. And that was on those documents, but based on your, uh, request during that consider, during that proposal, you had requested that, uh, Mr. Jackson, that we only fund new positions through attrition. So those projected positions never, were never added, they were never added into the budget.
Okay, well, that's, that brings us down to the nuts and bolts. The nuts and bolts is that, that if you've only got so much money, you make a decision, right, Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
That's the nuts and bolts. We should have added people, I don't care how you did it. We shouldn't be in a position of, really, we need four, five, or six people, see, that's where we are now. And, and that's, see, that's not, I mean, and I, and I hate to be a hard, hard nut about this, but that's, as you talked to Mr. Jackson, you saw his, his, his objections were that we do this within our existing funds. We didn't, it wasn't that we didn't think it was important as a board, that was never the case, because if you vote to put out twenty thousand units, you're not, you're not, we're smart enough to understand that it has to be supported. not, we're smart enough to understand that it has to be supported. But we found out, what we're finding out now is that, well, if, when it came down to the budget, we did other things, or we didn't, it wasn't the priority that maybe I thought it was, and I think that's what Mr. Jackson-
It was projected to be.
Well, one of, you know, clearly, one of the things that we did not foresee is this, this, you know, continuous creep of the technical support role from the technician into the day, daily life of the ITS, so-
I think that could've been addressed within the last two, two years. I agree with you. I mean, I'm not saying, you've got great reasons and I don't doubt the need at all, and we're not doubting that, it's just, we're sitting here now in tough economic times having to make hard decisions. So, okay, I, I'll finish with the IT, we've got, we had, I can't believe it's hours up and, um, we got one subject.
One issue out of the way.
But let's, um, thank you, Tom, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chair, one, one data point. The thirty-eight thousand was for technicians, the IT specialist was? Sixty-eight for an IT specialist.
Oh, I know that, and that, but when we opened the school, we put that in the, in the budget for the school, so I mean, so we covered that at that time.
That was including benefits and all?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a motion by Mr. Jackson?
We're just trying to, we're not getting ready, we got other things to talk about now, okay? Any, uh, other, other subjects, items on these?
I don't wanna go to ITech, but I want, last week, you made the comment that you had a plan on the budget, and I want you to share the plan with us.
I had a plan to discuss the budget.
Oh, I thought you said you had a plan, because I'm there-
I don't presume to have a plan on this budget, because I think I'm, I'm gonna tell you how I stand on it, but, um, but, uh, I would not have a plan tonight.
Okay, well, then you did-
I have a plan to discuss this.
You did say you had a plan for this position that I questioned.
Okay, there was one, there was one plan, uh, you're talking about the-
Analyst. We could take it from-
The analyst, which, was it the analyst?
The data analyst.
It was one of the data analysts that you said you could, we could take those funds?
I didn't think it was that, I thought it was another position. But anyway, my point was that, you know, in tough economic times, instead of increasing, um, the, uh, the growth, instead of budgeting the, uh, increasing growth of six hundred students and per stu, student allocation, which has been the most versatile and, uh, budget item that we've ever had, and the time I've been here, we've, it's been up and down, and I, and we can shoot other kinds of funds and if we have to, you can take that line item and, and pay for a, a position there. But see, that, I'm just thinking out loud, that, that's not a plan, that's just, how do you do things? How do you get things done? How do you find ways to, to, um, you know, spend, you know, spend your money when you, when you're in a tough economic time? So that was my, that was my thing, but that wasn't a plan for a budget, that was just a item itself.
Okay, but do you recall saying that-
I can't remember what it was, because I wasn't, I wasn't supporting it anyway, so, I forgot.
I thought you were, oh, okay, maybe it was.
I, I don't think it was that, though.
But you said it was some funds.
Nurse itinerant position.
I wrote it down.
That's what, nurse itinerant position I got, that's the one I, I said you could take the nurse itinerant position, seventy thousand dollars, and, and instead of increasing the, uh, per student allocation for growth, seventy-six thousand dollars, you could pay for that right there, that's what I said.
The nurse itinerant is forty-five thousand.
There's?
Forty-five.
I'm sorry, forty-five thousand, what it was.
I think you said, take it out of the, um, what fund, my mind is going blank, um, reserve fund is what you-
There were some funny thoughts on that.
This one here, can we still take that out of the reserve fund?
No, that wasn't it.
I'm dropping the millage. Yeah, that was it. That was it, it was seventy-seven thousand dollars, because as I went through it, I had the seventy-seven thousand dollars, I had the support staff quality and development. These are the ones that I said I would cut, and then, um, the four resource officers, I would cut those, that's four hundred, almost a half a million dollars for four, it's not gonna do anything for eighteen schools. So that should've never been in the budget, I think that was put in there because of the, um, the pressures put on us from, uh, the community pressure. But it's not that we don't care about the safety of our students, but four resource officers for eighteen schools throughout this district is going to make us look pretty dumb, uh, putting four officers for eighteen schools, it's impossible, you can't do that.
Can we ask someone to explain what their thinking and logic was behind that, Ms. Anderson?
You could ask them, go ahead.
Rather than, I mean, rather than assuming that there wasn't any logic or thought given to it.
I, I hesitate to speak for the entire executive staff to discuss this whole budget. I, I think there was a debate about, should we do anything as far as improving security at schools? And Mr. Carter and Mr. Earl's went out, looked at our schools, said there's some physical things we could do as far as entrances and doors and paddle alarms, that sort of thing. And one of the questions was, should we have SROs or, we used to have SR, two, uh, two elementary schools shared an SRO years ago, before we in fact changed that. And the question was, should we go back to SROs at the elementary school? And general discussion with executive staff. And again, I wanna speak to my colleagues, I, I think with the appeals that were made to the board by some citizens in the year, with the national discussion on school safety and how at least the resource officer may be a, a potential deterrent, that we, we saw the merits of an argument for doing something. Would four SROs solve our problems? Would it eliminate the problem? The answer is no, it would not. It, is it a potentially a step in a direction toward doing something? I think the board, the, the thinking of the executive staff was, yes, it was something, and it's something that we put down for the board to consider. Uh, you, you, ladies and gentlemen, do have the difficult decision of you actually vote, we don't vote.
But I wanna, but the thinking was-
Why are you answering this since it was a cabinet decision? I want to hear from Katie, since she's the superintendent. If you are the superintendent and it was a cabinet decision, I think you should be the one responding to Mr. Jackson's question. Because it was a cabinet decision, so your cabinet people made this decision, and the final decision was yours, whether to put it on there. And I think what I'm saying to everyone is, I feel like it was put on there to throw it back on the board to get rid of, and I don't like that. And I'm, and then if I'm wrong, I, I, I'm woman enough to say I'm wrong. But I cannot understand-
That was not-
What the rationale for four SRO officers are going to be for eighteen schools, and I don't even know what the radius of this district is, used to know it, but now we've grown, so. So if you have an SRO over here at Keels, and then you have one at Lundy B. Nelson, then you have one at Cotava Trail, and then you have one at, um, Lake Carolina, and the problem happens at, what's another school that's a long distance?
For tree.
Whichever, whichever one you wanna say. What good is that gonna do?
It cuts down on the response time. Right now, if, uh, if a high school resource officer can't leave the campus to go to one of those schools if they're called, then they're gonna have to call a line unit off of the regular sheriff's department allocation. But if we had these in the district, then wherever something of an emergency breaks out, then the response time would be lessened. By no means did anyone think of putting anything in there to put back on the board to cut, by no means.
But I think that most of us feel that way, I, I'm not speaking for everybody, but I think, you know, from some of the board members I've talked with, we feel that this was a, almost a slap on the face to the board members. So with that being said, we'll move on.
No, I don't wanna move on, just yet.
I mean, oh, go ahead, I don't have to, go ahead.
No, 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 no. One of the things that I think, because I sort of, I sort of embrace that concept, but one of the things I would hope could be expanded on is now that we have reduced the budget or potentially will reduce the budget in other areas, that instead of four, it might allow there to be now seven, because we're gonna reduce some, and it may not be seven, I, I haven't done the math, obviously, but, but by the time we're done with the budget tonight, we, if this is a priority, as Mr. Davis has described, then, like I said about the IT positions, that we need to identify the four, so I do agree with you, Ms. Anderson, four is not enough, but if it is a priority, then we need to have the staff identify the funds within this proposed budget by either budget reductions, uh, or, or reassignments, uh, uh, reclassifications of, of positions to fund, uh, an increased number of SROs, whatever those numbers are, or whatever those numbers need to be.
Or we could also look at what Dr. Fleming had looked at, had mentioned last week on, um, non-professional safety officers they were using in some area. I remember a situation at Keels, SRO officer over there put a little, little kid in the hand, uh, handcuffs, and he just slid his little hands right on out the handcuffs and went on outside and sat on the curb. She called nine-one-one and everybody in the sheriff's department responded.
I, I guess I'm wondering how you-
I mean, that's a true story. So I'm just wondering, what good is it gonna do?
Okay, we need to, we need to bring Ms. Anderson's discussion in. Uh, um, I personally think that I'd love to have extra SROs, I think every dollar we use for that expense will take out the educational budget in our schools, I mean, I'm just at that point.
Fleming, you're absolutely correct.
I mean, I just think it's just gonna, you, you're gonna, you're gonna-
Dollars add to class.
You gotta decide as a board, that's what we're gonna do. At this time, personally, I don't feel like that's the best way to spend-
As, as a member of the executive staff, though, let me say, my personal position on this was that, here's my board, uh, with, facing a question from our public and our community about what should we do about safety? If the board does nothing, then I see the board as being open to criticism. It seemed to me that I'm proposing some step in that direction, it was at least the board would have the defense of saying, we did something, and that was my thinking.
The general assembly certainly did not step up to the plate when this came about. So, I mean, so, again, it all comes back to us, so at this point, that's my position.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to make a comment, as, 'cause I, we had a discussion about SROs and about effectiveness in the school, and I seem to remember sort of coming away from that conversation with the idea that additional SROs in our elementary schools, the, the, the benefit per cost ratio, I seem to remember out of that discussion was not there. And if, I don't know, are we trying to achieve response times, and if so, what's our response times for our SROs to come from high schools or other, or middle schools that we currently have in the district, which are closely aligned to our, our elementary school locations? Or is it that you're telling us that we are truly improving school safety by the fact that there is somebody there with a weapon that we feel would deter folks from coming in? Because I, I need to be clear on the benefit, and again, I, I'm not sure, I, I thought after the discussion we had that, that it was determined that it wasn't enough to look at the cost, but, um, what, what is the goal by putting them there?
I concur, we did have that conversation. The board, as a board, we had that conversation.
Right.
I think it was a, I think the whole budget that they presented us of that conversation was like, we're putting eighteen, one into, to staff.
Took two million dollars. Eighteen, eighteen SROs.
That's right.
It was that, okay, and I think that was the discussion we had, not on four, not on six, just that, you know, this was something at this point.
Right, so, so I guess, and Dr. Rocha will put the question to you, what is the goal of the, of the resource officers that you have in this budget? Is it to decrease response time?
Absolutely, to decrease, uh, response time first and foremost, and secondly, they would, um, be responsible for several schools, and so there are certain days that you'll have a car out there and certain days that you wouldn't, so it would be very difficult for somebody to have a planned target, if you will, knowing that there's never, um, an SRO car there and an SRO on campus.
I just wanna add one quick thing, um, there was one document, it was Exhibit C in the big budget packet, and now, it was more of a narrative, so it did, it was like, okay, just so there was a lot on it, but I think that we had to discuss the budget, and the intent was that that document would kind of give you a, paint you a picture of the rationale that we went through, as we were talking through the budget. So if you look at that, you have the board priorities, then you have the design team and so on, and, and then it kind of showed how the thought process flowed through if we had zero mill, if we had nine, if we had twelve, and then there were actually some four thoughts put into the rationale of why we determined that priority and aligned it, so.
And, and I, I know, and I know that, and that is board priorities and security is certainly one of those. I, I think the biggest surprise for me is what I said earlier, that we had this discussion as a board, and I seem to remember walking away from that conversation after having talked with district folks who were some of the same ones that were just listed saying that we need them, kind of walking us through the idea that it may, that, um, the perception of benefit versus the reality may not be there is, is kind of how I walked away from that conversation. Ms. Anderson, I believe you said you felt the same way, so it was kind of a surprise when we see it in the budget after that conversation. And, and so that's why I'm asking for clarification on something I feel like is a different reaction or, or a different, um, process of adding these in here than where we were at the time.
And I, and I think, Mr. Chairman, I think that's why, doesn't help us tonight necessarily, but I think that's why a budget workshop is so critical, so that, so that the budgets, the budget is presented in, in that sort of manner with the opportunity for discussion, as opposed to being given, given to us and for us then to go through and determine inconsistencies and have them responded to. You make an excellent point, and, but when you reference Exhibit C, I see what you're talking, the rationale is there. Had that been talked through, I think some of Ms. Anderson's concern, for example, a moment ago, Mr. Manning as well, may have been, uh, may have been resolved through the presentation of the budget with the rationales for the, for the various categories, and same thing, same thing's true, uh, Dr. Ham, with the IT positions, I think that, that's critical. Again, it doesn't matter tonight, but I just wanted to just sort of be on the record saying that, that's important. I still stand on the ground, though, that, uh, I support the administration's logic, though, in, in terms of making some, some step towards this, uh, uh, addressing this need in a preventive way. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I thank you, I did read that, but I had forgot all about.
Sure.
Once I started looking at the numbers and figures and all that.
Makes sense.
I read this, but I, thank you for calling it to my attention.
Other, other comments about, um, yes?
Um, I was looking, um, one, I would like to see us remove the support staff quality and development position, while certainly supportive of our staff development, um, our support staff professional development movement, and hope that we'll, we'll continue, um, not only with, I think, some of our administrative staff, but also our teaching assistants and, and aides and others, um, I feel like that we, uh, can find room within our current staff to manage that professional development along with our other professional development in the district. So I'd like to see us remove that, uh, position at a hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, I would like to see us-
Can I respond to that, Mr. Manning, before you move to the next one?
Yes, sir, please, go ahead.
I, I, I would support that, however, I'd like to see some increase, um, be given in terms of, of compensation for whomever we're gonna expect to assume those duties and responsibilities, re, rather than just moving those to someone and say, add it to their plate. I'm not sure if there was anybody in mind, that you had in mind, Mr. Manning, but if we are going to have those be assumed by someone within, uh, the district, that we would, uh, compensate them with some, some increase in, in pay.
Yeah, I, I think, Mr. Jackson, I was thinking that we, um, that, that we have, uh, staff already in place, that that's their focus is, uh, is taking care of professional development, um, and that, uh, I'm not sure how many folks this covers that were doing the additional professional development, but I felt that we could just fold that into, um, existing staff duties, it's being managed now, the two hundred thousand dollars that we have, um, and, and so I, I felt like we could just kind of manage it the way we've been managing it. I, I, I mean, but I, you know, weigh-in administration, um, on, uh, you know, what we need to do to, to manage this, but I, it was my opinion, we could handle it with existing staff, we handled it last year that way.
Um, and, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also add in, um, our psychologists, I, I know we've, uh, we have the social worker increase, which I support, um, I think our psych, our psychologists are also underpaid compared to neighboring districts. Um, I asked for that at our last board meeting, and I was given a number of a hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars. I would like to see us add that to the budget so that our, uh, that, that we don't lose, um, our psychologists, which fulfill a critical role within our district.
um, our psychologists, which fulfill a critical role within our district.
Okay. So far, I've got four positions, IT and an increase in salary. And what else have I missed?
Uh, to deep take away that one position and-
Well, I, that's, I'm just going, uh, I'm not going, I mean, I start at zero and go up instead of start at the top and go down. Mr. Manning, I think that's the best way to do this.
Okay, so we have to actually say every single thing that we want to see in the budget?
Well, my point is, um, if you want to, I, I think the mo- I, I think that, um, if that's what you want, because that's what we're voting on. I think that's what you want.
So I, well, I need to start reading down this list then.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, can I call for a recess, please?
Two minutes. Well, it won't be two minutes, five minutes. Okay. Five-minute recess. Uh, the budget, as the budget stands right now, we have about a seven and a half million dollar increase with, if we do not adjust the mileage at all. Okay? So there's some other board, there's some board members who want, we're going to now discuss past that mileage rate, of, of level mileage on up, okay? And there's some things that we want to, to, to eliminate from this list and maybe add to. I believe there were some, we'll, we'll see if there's some discussion in that area, okay? Okay, um, estimated, uh-
We can't, James.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I think I know where he is, but I-
There he is.
But anyway, we're gonna, if, the, the end of the, the budget as presented to us with no mileage increase, um, stops at estimated increase in utilities. Has everyone got that, that item? Estimated increase in utilities.
Are you on them twelve, okay.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm using the twelve because that has the whole thing here. It has the most thing, and there's no sense in using anything else.
That'll be easier for us.
That's the easiest thing to do, you get your twelve out. And then get your, get this out. We discussed all these items, it's not an issue, okay?
I thought this, cause I thought it was the right one.
So get those, and then there may be some other items soon, okay? Now, the school resource officers, is there any, is there any, um, general, um, is there any, uh, comments on that? Okay.
Chairman, I, as much as I'd love to support Ms. Anderson's request, I, I think that, uh, that is something that leaving it in, um, will give us a, a, a step in the right direction towards ensuring and increasing the, the safety, uh, of those schools. I'd like to leave it in.
You'd like to keep it in?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a division there, so I'm gonna put on there, up and down. Okay, uh, central registration enrollment. This is something that, this is computer, uh, mostly software, is that right Fred? And I, we can take this out, this, my, my thing was to take it out of the reserve file.
It is a recurring, uh, just to be, uh, completely transparent with the board-
This is the one that's got the, uh-
This will be a recurring licensing fee to provide software that will allow us to, uh, greatly, uh, support our parents in registering their children each year and doing follow-up registrations. Uh, it could all be done electronically and would-
I will, um, I will- No, I, I, I'm not thinking, we got eight percent money. Come on, guys, let's think, we'll be here all night. I'll take it, this out, this year funded, we'll reserve and then we'll stick it in eight percent money. For technology, can we do that?
Chairman, we can do whatever the board decides.
But that's, but that's a, that's a technol- technical, can we?
It, it's software, we can treat it as a capital item, yes. Uh, the, the thing I'd caution the board is if we take it out of fund balance, then we in fact do not have a balanced budget, because we have a deficit budget. Because your expenditures will exceed your projected revenues. And you're, you're, you're plugging it from fund balance. But again, I'm, I'm fine with whatever the board decides, but it is a deficit budget when you do that.
Even if you, even if you reduce your overall budget expenses and simply have it designated that it comes from that funding source?
If, if there, if there is an offset to it, Mr. Jackson, you're, you're good.
Right.
If there's an offset, okay. It's gotta be an offset.
However, it's possible.
Right, right, I just want to be clear.
Council administration has to come up with the offset, is that?
We'll give you an offset.
We're gonna give you an offset.
It'll be up to you to exit it out.
Did we vote on that?
We're gonna take it out.
We haven't voted yet, we're just sort of discussing.
Okay, okay.
I'm just trying to make you understand what they're talking about.
Yep, pull that out.
Out, okay.
I'm gonna be-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Uh, I'd like to reconsider my request for the SRO and, um, at this time be willing to, uh, take that out.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any, any, any objection at this point? In discussion, for discussion purposes only. Okay. Okay, social worker salary scheduled to move to teacher salary with masters. Again, that's one of those things that- Do I know there's a reason to do that? I read, I think I read it in the thing, three, four, five weeks ago. Uh, what is, what's the discussion with that?
I'd leave it in.
Right, any, any questions? Okay, instructional technology. As we discuss, I don't think we need to, there were, there was a motion, there was a general consensus of four positions?
Four.
Yes.
That's IT positions plus the ITS?
That's correct.
Okay.
Four, so that makes five, that makes five.
That's what they're in?
That's correct.
I, you know, ITS is completely different than IT. Yeah, yeah.
Right.
And four?
Or technicians, one IT.
Summer days?
I'm, I'm not voting, you saying a total of five point five, is that what I heard?
Four plus the ITS.
Four, or four IT positions plus one ITS.
I, I recommend we take the days out and that the district, if they want those days, they can find that in some other way.
Out the days.
I'll go with that, or either I'll go with three and one with the days. Which one do you want to do?
You better keep the staff.
Okay, so go with four and one and take the days out.
Got it, I got it.
Okay. Okay, Spears Creek Road, part-time assistant. Okay, um, we discussed that. Part-time assistant, you added an hour today to each one of those positions, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's just, and that's what the cost would be to do that, seventy-seven thousand.
Yes, that's exactly right.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Any consideration for Clemson, is there not a need to do that at Clemson as well, or why just Spears Creek?
No, because, um, Spears Creek is national board certi- not national board certified, but they are accredited nationally and they are also DHEC, um, D, 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 I can't talk tonight, I'm sorry. But anyway, they're certified by a, a number of things. And so, because they have to have two certified people in the classroom at all times with the children and they go to six o'clock, that's where we're having a problem. Um, if they're part-time, then many of them leave and go to other positions that are full-time. Then we have to do more training and do the background check, et cetera. This will allow them to get benefits and we can have two fully certified and stay within the NAYC, um, guidelines.
I support that, Mr. Chairman. I guess my concern is, when you look at the academic data, uh, Ms. Mallett, and the performance of kids at Spears Creek versus the performance of kids at Clemson Road, Clemson Road is far substandard to the performance, academic performance of Spears Creek. And so though you wouldn't solve it with just adding an additional hour, there needs to be some serious consideration for what we need to do with the Clemson Road kids, um, in terms of making sure that we close that gap. That doesn't, this doesn't address it, but I just want to put that on the record.
That's right.
That is a very real concern of mine.
So-
I'm fine, Mr. Chairman, I'm just saying I wanted to-
I understand, I understand.
Yes, sir.
So we are, that was, that was a check, right?
It was.
Okay, that's what the general consensus is. Okay, the nurse itinerary position, like I said, I, I would go back up to seventy-six thousand, I would scratch that, I'd take out, I'd add that. On the, uh, on the zero budget, the, um, the additional, uh, student allocation for growth, uh, for the students, that would just lower the total amount. That's what it would do, it would decrease. Now, we did this, cause I think we did some stuff for, um, for supplies last year, is that right? That's why it was increased last year.
It increased, yes, that's correct.
So what are you saying you would do with this nurse itinerary?
I would just take that, I would take that.
Take it out and fund it through the other, okay, I see what you're saying.
Of course, it's not the same amount, it's not the same amount, but we're gonna, we're, we're not gonna be, we're not gonna be exactly right anyway. But that's my, that's my, if y'all don't want to do that, that's up to you, that's up to you guys.
Well, as long as we meet the CDC requirement. Have to do that.
I don't think that's the, we meet the CDC requirement.
We have to fund it.
We're, we're not meeting it as of today, I thought she said. This here, this would help, this would cause us to meet the requirement if we put this one position in.
That is, that is correct. I guess it's closer to the national average and state average. Right.
That's something we have to do in order to meet CDC requirements.
CDC requirements is not-
Well, it's not mandatory, but if we get a big lawsuit and we're not in the requirements of CDC, we could be stiffly fined.
Well, I mean, I'm for it, I mean, but I mean, cause I was gonna take it out of the others. Okay, we'll shake that one. That's where I was getting it from. But that's not gonna work and, all right, um, adult ed. So is the nurse itinerary, yeah, a check or not?
Check.
Uh, adult ed.
Excuse me, Dr. Fleming, but you did say that you wanted us to look to take those dollars from the estimated per pupil allocation for growth?
That's, that's mine and that will be in a motion, yeah, that will come out. Forty-five thousand.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to get clear.
Forty-five thousand dollars, okay?
So that would reduce that certainly.
Mr. Chair, before you cut on the Common Core, where are we with the Common Core, um, in our schools, not just to address the adult ed, but within our schools, because I understand we're behind on Common Core in District Two?
No, ma'am, we're-
Not at all.
No, we're not. As a matter of fact, we're gonna make a board presentation at our first board meeting in May. And so you'll know exactly where we are and what we're doing.
As far as testing and all of that, we're not behind?
No, ma'am, we are not behind at all. And we're right in line with, with what the state is doing. Um, the assessment will happen in two thousand fourteen, fifteen. So this year's current kindergarten students will be taking the test, if it's smarter balance, uh, with the Common Core in third grade and using electronic devices.
Since we're gonna wait till that meeting to talk about it, I guess I'll wait as well, but I will say, I guess my question, tried to what Ms. Anderson is asking is, are we doing anything in a, in a pilot test basis now for testing so that when fourteen does come around, they're not doing it for the first time? But I'll wait and we can talk about that later, but I think that's really sort of, what are we doing now? I know that, for example, Kentucky is doing some things now where they've already piloted their test. I don't think we piloted any Common Core exam testing yet, have we?
No, they haven't released them yet, Debbie, you can probably speak to that.
They created their own.
Somebody help me out, maybe Jeff can help me.
Yeah, Jeff.
In terms of testing our capacity to be able to do that kind of online testing, we did map testing that way with all of our students this spring as sort of a test of our capacity. But, um, we were not part of the smarter balance testing in our district per se. But Mr. Potts can tell you more about what we've done as a state.
Uh, well, I, one thing as a district, we're doing map testing right now, uh, and in the spring, we actually field tested items for map that were Common Core test items. Uh, next year, we're actually moving towards a full Common Core, uh, map assessment. So the students will be tested formative assessment multiple times throughout the year. That will be tested on the Common Core standards and will have basically a setup, um, that will look like the Common Core assessment items. So they're not just necessarily the free, uh, multiple choice responses that students are used to, but, uh, some kind of more like free response types questions, uh, that students can actually manipulate, that will match what is gonna be seen through, uh, smarter balance.
Thank you.
I mean, yeah, I didn't, I just got a chance.
Okay, well, let's go to the line item about adult ed. The one FTE to address Common Core demand requirements.
What does this mean?
What does this, I didn't know it reached that far really.
What does this mean, Ms. Mallett?
Currently, they are online with the new GED program and that also is with Common Core. And so they feel that they need additional assistance there. Um, Mr. Cunningham has done a phenomenal job with adult ed, recruiting additional students and really going out to the public. Um, but we feel like we need that particular FTE to help with the Common Core in ELA and math. Our numbers of students and capacity in adult ed is far, uh, higher today than it was even a year or two ago. It's continued to grow. Become a very robust program as far as adult ed is considered in the state.
Why are we tied to the Common Core though? I, I mean, if our numbers are up, they're up regardless of whether Common Core is coming or not.
You wanna, okay, um, it's not just with the Common Core, but it will give, it will give them additional folks to he- additional person to help with that. Um, the Common Core really cuts across science and math and social studies as well, so.
I understand that.
Maybe it's just the wording that we use.
Right, that's what I'm saying, yeah. The, the real need for the FTE is because you've got more students that are going to adult ed, taking the GED and the high school, um, equivalent exam.
Exactly, yes, sir.
Okay, so you're saying that in order to, to maintain our Common Core requirements, they need another staff member?
It's not really just the Common Core, but it's really for growth, yes, sir. Pieces.
They just need another person, what you're saying, okay.
I think it's the wording that confused everybody, yeah.
See, I'm trying to understand why Common Core, how, how that relates to-
Right, exactly.
I don't want to get in that discussion, so, so that's why, when you have it written like that, that was- You, you're saying they need another person out there for many reasons.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any, uh, any, any questions? Okay. So I gotta put check by then. Okay, next was data analyst. And I know, it's been discussed, it was last week. And, uh, this is to be, do a better job of writing, Dr. Ham, for us to do a better job.
To do more and to do better with the growing number of schools and the number of requests from data from a variety of sources. Plus, we basically doubled the accountability with the addition of the report card system that was part of the waiver, the A through F system. With the, the volume of data analysis that goes out in that office has expanded dramatically.
Who's doing that now?
The new father.
Mr. Potts, you need help on that? Because I, because this is one that I'm, I, you know, in a tight economy, I'm gonna be honest with you. I'm not, I know we need it, shoot, there's a lot basically. I'm just, just, I'm just wanna make sure that we're touching the educational fabric, that we need to and what-
Well, I, I know that for a district, if you value having information, um, like I think we all do in here, um, I, I know for a fact that I need more assistance to be able to get the volume of information, um, that people are requesting, and it's not just board requests, but we have, you know, I don't know where Ralph went, but we have principals who are requesting information about things that are happening with their schools. There's, you know, tons of surveys happening, where there's requests from state and federal, um, levels about information that we have in the school. Lots of things dealing with testing and making sure that the accuracy of that is correct, so, um, yeah, I would-
So, do I hear you saying you need assist, uh, an assistant would work?
No, uh, somebody who, um, understands the educational environment, has a, a good knowledge of manipulating information and being able to take data from lots of different places and pull it together, um, that would be what I'm looking for.
That's good.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a quick question? Jeff, when you say that the board is asking for information, is this information other than what you provide us at a board meeting?
Oh, no, I mean, there's, 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 you know, sometimes I've, you know, I've probably been up maybe ten times in the last, you know, year, so there's some information that comes to you, but there's lots of other information that is asked for, you know, throughout the district. And it takes somebody to sit down and look at it, make sure it's accurate, appropriate and, you know, things like that.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Jeff, I know you mentioned with testing and some other things, isn't that part of what John Arnold does? And he cannot assist you with part of this?
John Arnold, um, is, uh, currently our testing coordinator for the district. We test, um, you know, whether it's a standard or formative assessment, I think like a hundred and thirty-eight days a year. So, of our- So, of our, uh, of the, the student school year, so he is constantly preparing for assessments, um, making sure that assessments are being done in, in a valid way throughout the district. And then getting that information back so it goes back to the State Department or other places in a, in a timely manner, so. Um, I do ask John Arnold for assistance, um, but especially during the spring, he is just inundated with, uh, requests and, you know, so there's plenty of things that are on his plate as well.
Mr. Chairman, I fully support his position, and also let me say, th- this, this will help us, because I notice we've not gotten a data snapshot since last October. And if the board remembers, that document, uh, is such, is a tremendous value and asset to helping us make sound decisions and the staff make sound decision regarding the performance of our students, I, as they compare to students, uh, within our district, as they compare to students within our state, as they compare from school to school. And so I think if that position helps to continue to get that information to us so that we can make logical decisions about how to improve, where we're falling down, where our students are weak, uh, I support it one hundred percent.
I also echo that sentiment.
I'll support it.
Okay, additional two, uh, FTEs for itinerary, uh, elementary system principals. That is a little bit larger item there. That's a hundred, that's two hundred and eighty?
How many did we move when we moved, when we took them away, Sheriff?
Every, um, every elementary school had two assistant principals.
And what did we take away?
We have five schools that are below the six hundred mark. The six hundred mark is the mark where they get the second assistant principal.
So we, when we removed them, we just removed five? And so we need to gradually get back up to those five?
Well, we may have, it depended on where they were population wise at that time. If they were under six hundred, six hundred or under, then they would have been removed. So can you all reflect or recall exactly how many schools were under the six hundred mark then?
That's okay, I see.
Okay, just, but, but there was, there was a standard, Ms. Anderson, and that was a district standard. And we went back to the district standard, and so that's, that's where we came from.
We've had several schools move above six hundred in that time, and we've opened new schools that remain under, so it's, it's been a bit of a moving target.
But you can do it with two. For the five schools.
Anybody else have an interest in, in, in adding that item? Does anybody else have an interest in adding that item? I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, I support you.
Maybe, um, maybe, um, item that we have to vote on, okay? Point five FTEs for assistant administrator per high school, two, two point five FTEs or the equivalent. That's administrative assistance, that's taking it from part-time to full-time, is that correct?
That's taking one at each high school.
One at each high school.
That's right.
One at each high school.
Not all of them.
No, no, sir.
Does that, does that allow then, uh, someone to increase their teaching load now so that we, uh, so that we have an opportunity to look at, um, uh, class sizes? In this case, if you're adding one, aren't the AAs teaching now? Does this, does this decrease their teaching load by adding one?
Decrease.
The total teaching load of AAs by adding this one size? Or does this one come in and just continue to teach as, as the others are doing? That's what I'm asking, that's what I'm asking.
This will allow one of the AAs at each high school to be free of teaching.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so therefore, how are those classes now covered?
That's what the principals will have to take care of with, within their particular schools. Now, the, and the reason this is on here, this was the highest priority for the high school principals.
What you've doing, you're increasing the, the money for that, so that, Sheriff, I believe that's what we cover, that's what we're.
That ends up covering the classroom instructor.
That's what I'm asking, that's all I'm asking.
Yes.
Otherwise, you wouldn't have to have, otherwise you wouldn't have to have a line item, you can just do it as time you wanna do it. Administrative.
That is correct.
This is what this is for.
You're right, you're right.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. How are you going to decide which AA be moved up to that full-time position?
That's the principal's call.
So will that be a different decision made at each school, or would principals come together and just come up with the criteria to make sure it's fair across the board?
That's actually an administrative, um, decision, that's not a board decision.
But I think what she's saying, I kinda agree with her, it needs to be fair across the board. One school can't do it one way, and another school do it another way, and another school do it another way. I think there should be some kind of consistency with it.
They would have to look at their individual needs, they, they're different, so.
So that's my question. Is it going to be based on the criteria that the principal comes up with, or is something that Dr. Brochew is gonna come up with, HR, or just?
No, it's gonna be the principals.
It, it would be the principals, and notice that it says, um, two point five FTEs or equivalent. And we have some of our principals currently who have, um, utilized instead of AAs with the same amount of money of a half of an AA they were using for an individual that serves to help monitor students and, um, that may be part-time, that's retired from some other line of work, that, uh, is, is lending extra, uh, eyes and ears and, and, um, mobility around, around their, their building.
So you're saying it might not even be a, they might not use that?
That is correct, but the, the dollar's up to what that point five would be. So we want to allow those principals to come up with the creative ways and innovative ways to take care of the needs in their particular campus.
Mr. Chairman, uh, along with the, uh, previous line item and this one, are we gonna have to amend our staffing policies to accommodate the positions? Because I believe the reason we cut that was to be in line with our staff.
We will have to change the, um, the allocations.
Okay, that, that was my only question, thank you.
We're not gonna do it before the, we're not gonna push it to.
Yeah, no, no, I understand, I just wanted to make sure that we, that.
Good idea, I mean, thanks for reminding me, you're right, because I totally forgot about that. But, thank you. Okay, uh, uh, any, any, uh, ideas on this item?
Mr. Chairman, would, would it be possible to split this position, um, into a one part-time board secretary and the remainder of that funding be used to assist with the staff quality and development in the district?
You know, we, we haven't, um, I'm very, I, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm very positive about your suggestion, but we just have not discussed that as a board. And I think that's one of those, and I know, I know we're at budget time and it's very difficult to slide that in. Is anybody willing to, uh, discuss, see, we'd have to, that's a total new item for discussion.
Well, I did include it in my, my email, Mr. Chairman, unfortunately, I wasn't able to be here at the last board meeting, but I, I, I indicated, uh, the, the need to have that, um, part-time position, so I, I do support Mr. Manning's request in that regard.
Okay, well, you, how about up here, it, in zero, it estimated, we, we put a forty-five thousand dollar nurse, you want to pencil it in there?
Where's the nurse?
No, no, we've, um, there's, out of seventy-six thousand dollars, that's not a lot of money, that's twenty-something thousand dollars, but that's a part-time position.
So I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, please repeat what you were asking, so I.
Well, um, we can, um, in the, uh, estimated per stu-, per pupil allocation of growth, there's seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four. We've, itinerant nurse, forty-five thousand dollars. That leaves us a balance.
Gotcha.
We're gonna put it in that line item right now, since, again, this is a.
You could do it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes.
Uh, then, I, I guess going back then to the, um, quality, support staff, quality development, um, uh, I'll, I'll support Mr. Jackson's statement of, um, some type of supplemental salary if that would benefit, um, that area, as opposed to the entire hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Does it staff have?
We have moved past the point five FTEs here. Mr. Administrator, yeah, I haven't.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Yes.
I, I thought we were on the next one.
We were.
What did we decide on that one?
I thought we were in agreement to do that, and I apologize if I jumped the gun there, I thought that was a decision.
Okay, next item.
Mr. Chair, on the part-time board, uh, secretary?
Yep.
Would you just eliminate that at this time on the budget and discuss it in, within the board and possibly take the funds out of the contingency, the board contingency fund?
I would be, I'd be much more comfortable doing that.
Because that's, that, if that's what we're gonna be using it for.
I think, I think I'd be much more comfortable doing that as, as a board.
Since the discussion's been very, very, it's, it's been there, it has been there, that's true.
Again, for staff clarification, you're potentially talking about reducing the board contingency as a line item from a hundred and fifty K to say a hundred and twenty K to fund this position?
Or, may, maybe, Mr. Davis.
This is gonna come at a later time.
There is no position at this time.
There's no position.
At a later time, they can make the choice to utilize those funds in that way.
Right.
No problem.
Okay, um.
Yes.
Okay, sorry for that confusion, folks. So then going back to the support staff quality and development, um.
Then we're gonna delete the whole thing then?
Let's just remove the whole thing.
Right. And student transportation for CAP and FC, I just, at this point, this is one of those, I can't see at this time. I mean, any other ideas?
How, how critical is that for the success of those students? When we have the program, are we saying that without the transportation that we are drastically affecting the quality of instruction for that program?
We have a lot of students who, um, cannot go and participate without the transportation. Um, a lot of the students who do get there are tardy, late. Um, it would be of great benefit if we could do that, but we understand in budget times that it, it may be not feasible this time.
In some way, this would set precedence for other magnets, right, where?
Mr. Manning, one of the things you might remember in our Saks KC visit, this, um, was one of the, uh, recommendations for us to consider, and, um, and it was, you know, one of those things about access.
Accessing, equitable access to programs across the district. And this was one strategy that was considered in a manner consistent with that, uh, Saks recommendation.
And this, because of the particular program, this is a need for that one specific program, this.
Based on what Ms. Mallett said, and also based on the fact that both of those programs currently are underutilized. They could both, uh, uh, have more students. We felt this was an approach that would solve the, the tardy issue and open it up to more students to, uh, A, give them access, but B, also, um, uh, make the programs more efficient by maximizing their participation.
And the supporting documentation to show how you arrived at this number is where? To show how you reached the two hundred and eighty-five thousand?
That's the cost of the drivers who search buses. If you make it so the buses, we'd have to buy, uh, these states, all the main buses.
Because it's not fairly distributed, this is only one end of the district. It might be a simple.
Follow-on piece to that is that if you adopted this, and we would be back to the board at your next meeting with the Catholic spinach proposal, about five hundred and thirty thousand dollars to buy those buses.
That's a big caveat.
What, 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 how, how should we say it? That if we put the CFA on this end of the district as well, wouldn't it be cheaper to do transportation for students versus putting the CFA on this end of the district as well as the Kelly Mill location?
You'd have, um, you're, you're talking about total staffing?
Correct. To, to, to model that same identical program of CFA.
I would think it would be more expensive. Yes.
It would cost more to put it on this end of the district, so in the long run, we're saving by having transportation and we'd be, we're being fair so that the children on the southern end of the district will have an opportunity to go because their transportation would be provided, and those in the northern end of the district can go. So I think it's a win-win for those students.
I, I, I would agree with Ms. Anderson with CAP, I'm not sure I would agree with CFA. And I think, but the reason I'm saying this is because of the entrance requirements for CFA.
What are the requirements for CFA?
What are the requirements for CFA, Ms. Mallett?
They come in as, um, second grade students.
How they admit it though, is what I'm talking about.
Um, they are admitted on a rotating, their, um, enrollment is open all the time, they do interviews. Um, Ms., um, Stephanie Courtney goes and interviews the students and interviews the parents and the schoo-, the teachers at the sending schools. She gets the information from them who might benefit greatly from being in those programs. So, I mean, she literally goes to every school and, and talks to all the parents.
And it's for, uh, for those children who have certain learning disabilities?
Right.
Some learning, um, I won't say disabilities, but what?
They learn differently, yeah, very different, yeah, yes, ma'am.
Styles, I didn't wanna use disabilities on that. So I just think it's a very important program.
I don't disagree with you, but I've visited there and I've had conversations with the principal, and I looked at the enrollment and sizes and the challenges they have in terms, in terms of getting away from the stigma that a lot of people feel that their kids are given by going there. And I, and that's what I'm, I'm thinking, there needs to be further discussion about the selection process and how it, how it's done before we just automatically assume that it's fair and equitable, is what I'm saying to you.
Oh, I wasn't aware of that.
Didn't we open where they could go, what middle school did we extend that to, or have we extended that program yet?
You know, I said when we do nineteen, I would like for CFA to be in that, uh, nineteen school.
I'm talking about when they leave the elementary level.
We talked about that at Kelly Mill, you're right, Ms. Specter, but no, we do not.
Ever, it's never gone anywhere, has it?
We do now, would like to say, uh, Ms. Anderson, we do have two classes at Keels with CFA, two certified CFA teachers, uh, who are there at Keels.
I thought it was a modified program.
Well, it is a modified, it's just second and third grade, but, um, I think because of space, um, but we do have.
There, there's no way that we could privatize some of this and, and put a contract out instead of us buying the buses and hiring the staff to do it full-time? Mr. Jackson, you say you were unclear that this would benefit CFA or that, I wasn't.
That's what I said.
But CAP might be.
Yeah, yeah.
It, so, Jack, would, if we just did half of this and took care, I mean, could we cut that in half if we just did CAP right now and not CFA? Or does it not work out to an even split?
What I heard, Mr. Chairman, from CFA officials was that the greater need they have, Ms. Anderson, is for another second grade class. I've mentioned this to staff before, they would like to expand second grade as opposed to the issue regarding transportation and buses and that sort of thing. That's, that's the other piece of it, they, they have a greater need for that.
We're extending second grade?
Yes, ma'am, extending second grade and adding another second grade class, bringing in more students in the second grade.
And you would follow the campaign?
Well, we had a general conversation about that, yes, ma'am.
Have you guys done anything?
Mrs. McDaniel can probably answer that.
We have looked at that, um, and, and that request has come in both from CFA staff and also it was a discussion with the board. Um, currently, CFA is, um, uh, underutilized from how it was initially programmed. And so basically, we have, um, a lower student teacher ratio there than how the program was designed. That doesn't mean that we can't adjust the student teacher ratio expectations to be more consistent with what they actually are. But from a operational standpoint, it is operating with fewer students than we anticipated, and the, uh, two, two things. One, the transportation was one, um, barrier that we thought we could remove to assist with that. that we thought we could remove to assist with that. And secondly, uh, we hadn't figured out, Mr. Jackson, how to rationalize adding a second, second grade when we haven't been able to, um, always fill out the first, second grade and even when bringing in rolling later. But, uh, I think we, you know, certainly we would warrant some additional, um, additional analysis.
How many students, approximately, how many students do you have there currently? Who can answer that?
And all of CFA?
I wanna say seventy-five, but I, I, again, I.
How many teachers?
I'd have to look that up, Ms. Anderson. We have, we have, uh, two at three, two at four, two at five, and one, so that's seven teachers. Um, so they're operating at about a, a ten to one, and it's supposed to be operating closer to six, sixteen to one was the original, um, design. That doesn't mean that we have to keep it there, but that's how it was originally programmed, that it would be at sixteen to one, as was CAP designed to be at approximately sixteen to one. And it's operating closer to twelve or so.
So we're gonna pay this amount of money for only seventy-five students, did I hear you right?
That's how many students are there?
Hmm.
And only, and not that many, because those students will probably continue to, to, um, you know, most of those will continue to drive themselves.
I'd support Mr. Yes, ma'am.
Jackson, I was not aware of that.
Yes, ma'am.
So that was information that we all need to.
I think, I think someone needed to look at, I think we need to get the numbers. You got the numbers?
We need to make some.
Don't get me wrong, y'all got the numbers about.
Make some decisions. We, we're gonna have to make some decisions with that, with, uh, when we have some of these classes that could come down. We've got teachers that are with a ten to one, or nine to one, or eight to one ratio. It's not fair to the other students. So I wanna put a big question mark on that and charge the cabinet to bring some information within the next few months to the board on that, please.
If the purpose is of a vote tonight, um, would we be willing, Ms. Anderson, to simply eliminate CFA for the purpose and reduce the budget appropriately tonight?
Yes.
So Jack, we'll split that in, in half? You said you're comfortable with that?
Chairman, I think.
How many, how many students are in the CAP program?
The CAP program is, um, around fifty-five students.
We still have low numbers that we're looking at.
CAP was designed for around seventy-five students, so it's, um, it's, uh, lower than, than originally, um, designed. But it was always designed for only seventy-five. And CFA was designed for about a hundred and ten kids, um, originally.
I feel like before we can add this to the budget, we need to get the academics or whatever it needs to take in place at the schools.
This is strictly transportation though. This is strictly transportation.
Is it less students in CAP because of referrals or what?
Access, transportation is a real issue.
Also, I believe that, uh, Dr. McDaniel and I, he say that the tardiness plays into some of the current academics.
Definitely, yes, yes.
Because of transportation. So transportation is a core issue surrounding the primary purpose of this program, which is to help the students that need it.
And these are the most needy, these are students typically a year or two behind. And the whole purpose of this program is to accelerate them so that when they go to high school, they are tenth graders, they carry with them a certain number of units, four units, I believe, that make them into, or give them that opportunity to be on grade level. But we're, we're missing a lot of children still.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to simply give the, the staff a hundred and forty thousand dollars as a figure and they can make it work. And if they need additional dollars, they'll find it from within existing resources to provide the number of buses, to provide the transportation of CFA to, to CAP.
Then you, but then you're talking about, uh, uh, adjustment on the eight percent.
That's correct. That's correct.
Hundred and forty thousand, guys.
Just so I'm, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Bob.
Uh, remember the hundred and, the two hundred and eighty thousand dollar number here is for bus drivers and fuel expenditures, that sort of thing. Those aren't capital in nature. So.
They, they adjusted this, excuse me, Mr. Davis.
Two hundred and forty thousand.
That's correct.
But, uh, they, I'm sorry, I lost train of thought. The, uh, the hundred and forty thousand, it will just pay for CAP.
Right, that's what we're asking for now, we're taking CFA off the table at this time.
And you're saying, hey, that will pay for the drivers. We will still come back to you at your next meeting for the buses to transport those, those students.
Realize this isn't the end of it.
That's correct, to, to just CAP.
That is a capital expenditure.
Thank you.
Come back with us, to us with information on the CFA.
Ask them if, at another time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Y'all got that now?
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to go back to my request before we broke for the psychologists at a hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars to make that request. I'll, I'll put it out there, the rest of the board can go at it at their pleasure.
Hundred and thirty-four thousand?
Yes.
And that's how many?
And that would, uh, how many psychologists is that?
It's all of them.
I don't have the list, but it was like a dozen, and I'm looking.
Twenty-eight psychologists.
Twenty-eight, and that, and that's simply to bring them up to standard with surrounding districts, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, any other?
That represents an average, Dr. Vigri, um, that would be the, that would be the average salary when you should bring them up to the, the standard around the district, with the comparable district, is that the average?
That's the average of the comparable districts around the, and I'll tell you which ones are.
Yes, I'm gonna ask that next.
Lexan to Bad.
Lexan to the right.
And Bob, was that part of that report we got when we asked for the, uh, salary study?
Yes.
Cause I remember seeing the salary study and who was comparable, who wasn't, across all of the areas of the district.
By bringing them to the average of those districts, and it becomes now a permanent part of the future budget, how do we, so that the personnel line item increases going forward? And so we, we get that figure at some later time. We'll get that figure at some later, that increase next year. As, as a result of bringing them up currently this year, it increases the personnel budget going forward. And so next year's personnel budget is increased by that amount, is what I'm asking.
Correct.
Just verbalizing what to expect next year when we see a personnel.
Salary line has been increased to a hundred and forty thousand.
It will be in the, it will be a line item here, it will be in.
That's correct, that's what I'm asking.
All right, any other items? Is that it?
Yes, sir.
I'm calling, I'm gonna call it. That was gonna be added. Taken out if we had, if somebody wants to.
Now, we're gonna get a new figure, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we are, we're getting ready to get a.
We're doing it now.
We're getting ready.
Yes.
Can I ask one clarifying question? The, uh, in, in the twelve mil budget that we have here and also in the nine mil budget, there were unallocated funds, that does not include the unallocated funds, only what we've asked for.
Now, give me that, um, what is?
Okay, thank you.
Give me the figure, the numbers again, you said nine, what?
So that money has to be derated with, um, millage increase, which is basically equivalent of approximately nine point one. Now, when we, when we go in and run all those calculations, is there money that's two thousand dollars to sweep somewhere? But if you're quite around that?
I am so impressed with you being able to do that like that.
Yeah.
I really am. I'm ser, I'm very serious, I'm very serious. I'm very serious.
Okay, okay.
At least I do this in our heads.
No, I'm very impressed with that. Bob already, Bob already had the number written down, he's seen if yours is gonna match his pencil. Yeah, on his paper, he's probably written it down.
Your former colleagues, Mr. Montgomery, used to do it.
I bet, sir, I bet he did, I bet he did.
Okay, guys, um, okay, any other discussion at this time? Cause we're getting ready to make the motion. Any other discussion?
So, Mr. Chairman, I would ask before we make the motion, so that we make sure that she's got everything that we've said and I know what we've said. Could you, would you read just?
Fast walk.
Can she fast walk this? Let me get my clear clean sheet of paper.
Look at your, look at your paper.
I'm gonna look at my clean sheet of paper, cause that one is.
If you're looking at the twelve mil budget, I'm just going to, um, basically pick down the changes only or all of that.
That's fast.
Changes. Um, the line with estimated per pupil patient growth decreased to thirty-one thousand. It is the fifth line item.
Gotcha, it's what now?
Decreased to thirty-one thousand, three fifty-nine.
Okay.
The line with school resource officers, fourth, is additional, has been removed to zero. Central registration enrollment decreased to zero.
With the understanding that we're gonna move forward with it through current, future.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
Um, instructional technology, um, has been changed to allow for one FT, uh, ITS for the centers and four school technicians. The total dollar amount is two hundred and seventy thousand, three fourteen.
Seventy?
Two seventeen.
Seventeen.
The line item with support staff quality and development, um, position has been removed. The line item with student transportation for CAP and CFA has CFA removed and been decreased to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And then additional line item has been added for the increase in psychologist salary schedule to the average base level.
Okay, would a figure not in there about the psychologists? You didn't have a figure for the psychologists?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars.
Okay.
Seven, one thirty-four, seven.
Seven.
Seven hundred.
Thirty-four thousand, seven hundred.
That's just for all of, all twenty-eight to be increased.
Information, uh, questions?
Questions, can? Well, maybe I can figure it out on the millage, millage sheet. No, I can't figure it out on the millage sheet because we've, well, yeah, if we do the officers, resource officers, it was one point four nine mil. Did anybody add that up?
Yes, she calculated it.
Oh, you did, you just nine point one mil, thank you. And I wrote it down on the other sheet.
Can I ask one additional question, just to be sure that we're all on the same page? I, I know we have the Common Core discussion the following week. While we're on the topic of budget, is there anything at all that you need for Common Core for us to be ready? I just wanna make sure we don't get into next week and there was something that came up that we should.
No, I, I believe that, um, Ms. Mallette was very accurate in that we are piloted, pilot testing in many ways, we already have the one-to-one devices for the assessment piece already in play. Um, the professional learning.
We have, yes, the federal money and state money for professional development. A good bit of that, a large bit of that is going to Common Core, yes, sir.
Okay, I just wanna make sure there weren't any positions or anything, y'all.
We'd always like to have some positions, but no.
I'm not just throwing them out, but I just, I know that's important, so I wanna make sure.
No, that's, that's fine, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I make one comment? Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
May I make one comment about one of the line items?
Sure.
Um, and Sue, I'm just gonna direct this, maybe Dea or Dr. Brescher. We're increasing on the psychologists, what was it, a hundred and thirty-four? Seven hundred.
Seven, right, yeah.
Um, that's fine, but I am still not pleased with that area. Um, I'm not sure if everything has been taken care of and there's been enough organization that we really even need to increase this. Um, I think we might have people still in that, those positions that might not need to be in the positions that they're in. Or whatever needs to be done. But I still don't think it's at the level where we need to be as far as the State Department. And I just wanted to add that to the record, but I would like it on the agenda at some point at a future board.
We can certainly do that, Ms. Specter.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve a nine point one mil increase, um, or slightly adjusted as finance may need it, um, for this, uh, for the upcoming twenty thirteen, fourteen school year.
Second.
Motion is second. Any, any further discussion? Well, I have some prepared remarks, but I'm gonna give you the readers, the ITS version of them tonight. I mean, we've just, we've done some blood, sweat and tears in here tonight and and we did the best job that we can to ensure that, uh, we have the proper educational, financial material and support for our, our district and our students' families and our community. Been doing this a long time. And it is apparent that, uh, that we as a school will only have control over so much, um, of the financial funding in our district. Very little comes down to it. I believe that we have done a tremendous job with, with all the financial aspects in our, that we control, which include the, um, the debt service part of our budget. I don't think there's, we could've done a better job than any district that I know of in that area, which is great. Unfortunately, there are many other factors that we must face as a district, which does not supply us, I mean, we, we, the factors do not supply us with resources. But these factors mandate expenditures. At this point, we only have to look at federal mandates such as IDEA Title One, No Child Left Behind, and many other initiatives by law, the programs that are funded originally at a fifteen to twenty percent rate. And then they go down, they never go up. I wonder how they keep going, let's see. The federal government has never lowered its budget ever that I've been alive, so. So it's not because they didn't have more money, because they did not fund it. The state of South Carolina has been doing much of the same thing to us with this numerous categories of funding, property tax relief here, all set with sales taxes, confusing and it's all tied, been tied to educational funding instead of property tax relief. Um, the state is, um, what disadvantage that the federal government has is that they can't print or borrow money to fund us. So what does that mean? It means it lowers our expenditures. Per student costs, costs since, uh, two thousand and eight has dropped from twenty-seven hundred dollars to a low of seventeen hundred, fifty dollars this year, so around two twelve, two twelve. Uh, to offset this, uh, decline in our di, our district has raised millage every year to our local taxpayers to offset these budget cuts. We're not the only district to do this, but in the local area, we're the king of the hill on this, on this. We've done it more, um, than any other district. But we're working at two thousand, I believe about two thousand levels now in state funding, right, Bob?
Gotta go back a decade, Dr. Fleming.
That's where we are now, so. And that doesn't even include inflation. Okay. This argument, um, the argument has always been that if you did not raise millage, that we would deprive our students of funding for today and in the future. And that is true, that the local aspects, um, that is absolutely true because, because of the economic downturn at the state level, the General Assembly has no problem in reducing education fund. It has no problem in reducing education fund, and they won't raise taxes. To cover it. The federal government never plans on funding anything they mandate, never, ever. And you know, enough, when is enough enough? I mean, and as, as a board member, how long do we, as a school, as a school district, continue to raise the millage of our taxpayers to cover the deficiencies of our partners at the state and federal level? How long do we continue to supplement these failures to educate us? For me, this is the year that I cannot, in good conscience, continue to raise local millage. I couldn't do it. We've hammered out these, I didn't speak really against any of them. We all need it. I, I thought, I can think of one or two things I'd like to have personally. I'd like to include. I believe that good leadership has kept us in the educational, the financial position that we are right today. We have made the hard decisions. We have prioritized our commitments and held the trust of our community and state to continue to show our community leadership that does not say, if the times are difficult and funding levels are down, maybe we can find a way somehow to do what we have to do in other ways. I know it'd be a struggle and a challenge. And by the way, in, if you're raising it in several years, a couple of years, we're gonna be asking this public for new schools to cover our growth. So as a board member, as this board member is, I can't support it. I'm not, I mean, and this is the reason why. And I just can't continue to, to make up the deficits, deficiencies that others have left us year after year. One year. I can't support it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just would like to say, um, it's really pretty much my same statement from the last board meeting. I, I have a lot of the same feelings as Dr. Fleming. I just can't seem to raise any taxes on the taxpayers at this time. People are struggling just to hold their job. Their paycheck is not meeting their needs because everything around them's going up, but their pay scale's not. So I just wanted to make that statement.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to make a statement that I certainly support the businesses and the taxpayers in Richland Two who have always been supportive of education for our students and the opportunities for every student. The educational success that we've realized in this district has, uh, is one of the main drivers for the fact that this district is increasing in size, the, the reason why we have to come back for bond referendums and for, for other funds. And, and I hope that folks understand that, uh, that you as a taxpayer, that your home value has nothing to do with this millage that we are about to approve. We've approved eight percent money. We've approved other bond expenditures that you as a, uh, as a community have voted for. Those things do go to increase your taxes. And I think we've unanimously supported all eight percent spending, capital expenditures, uh, which do go across the board. I think that, um, as we, as I, I received some numbers from Richland County that I thought was interesting. Since the twenty-ten year, we have increased a hundred and eighty-four businesses within Richland Two. And I look at the fact that we had opportunities for folks to come talk to us. We have opportunities for folks to email, phone call, other ways to get in touch with us. And if they have contacted other board members, um, you know, that has not reached me, that the numbers are coming to us saying that this is a problem. And while we certainly don't wanna raise the taxes on our local businesses unnecessarily, I think you can see through today's discussions that we have been very deliberate about things that we're asking for. And that, uh, that this is a partnership with the district. And the district, in, in some ways, uh, gave us very little wiggle room, saying that what they have currently is completely necessary. And so if we want to, uh, provide some of these other things that we make that, we, we've been forced to make decisions to increase those expenditures. Uh, for those reasons, um, I will fully support the budget, the mills that we have before us this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment, some comments of amaze.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. I, I think the inequity in funding across the entire state of South Carolina is deplorable. And because of that, we find too many districts in our state where they are either haves or have-nots. Fortunately for Richland School District Two, since its inception, it has been one of those districts that has been a half district. And as a result of that, the student performance, the success of our teachers, the success of our schools and our entire community has benefited from that tremendous opportunity of haves. The citizens of Richland Two, of which I am a member, have readily and enthusiastically supported providing funds to continue to maintain the high standards that our district has always offered for the students, uh, in its, in its district and under its care. Unfunded mandates by the state, unfunded mandates, as you've mentioned, Mr. Chairman, by the federal government, unfortunately have continued to grow, while at the same time, our district has found a way to overcome those and remain a high-flying school district. Growth in our student enrollment has not paused. It has not receded. It has not gone backwards, but it has continued to increase in more than a decade. If someone could turn off the faucet of growth, we might be able to maintain the status quo in terms of funding to provide the services needed for the population we serve. Unfortunately, every year, our population continues to grow more than five or six hundred students with no additional funds coming from the state or the federal government to provide that support. Not supporting the education of all of the kids in Richland Two is not an option for me. And not providing them with the highest quality of education is also not an option. Without the resources, we will not be able to continue to provide the level of educational support we have provided over the years. I think the citizens of Northeast Columbia support the high-quality education we have provided in the past and will continue to support that in the future. Unfortunately, that's the curse of our well-known academic success, attracting so many students from throughout the region and the area to be a part of this great, outstanding educational community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ready to vote?
I have a statement. I thought somebody else was, I was gonna go last. Mr. Chairman, because South Carolina is an embarrassing state, I don't think that we can allow, um, unfunded mandates to justify us punishing our students and not allowing them the opportunity to compete with the global economy. It is our responsibility to educate every child of this district to the fullest of their abilities. And if it causes taxpayers to rearrange, there is something in everyone's budget that we can do without once a month. Whether it be a couple of games of golf, whether it be a couple of cases of beer, whether it be a couple of s- things or cigarettes, or whether it be a couple of shopping sprees, if we all do a self-assessment, we can make this happen. But to not provide a quality education for our children who are going to be, or who will be, our future, and I say this all the time, they are the ones today, twenty years from now, those students are gonna be sitting behind those desks, those computers, and, and the post office or banks, and if your check is not right, can't say anything. And if it's not on time, we're not gonna be able to say anything. So I don't think that nine point one mills is going to break a make. I'm a single parent, retired, two homes, and my son have a, 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 a business. I've made it this far, and I think I will continue to make it. So I'm just gonna ask the public to trust this board, that we have done a good job and we will continue to do a good job in the educational process of our students. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, at this time, I will not be able to support the nine point one mil. Um, I think, um, at the last meeting, I asked a question to Jack about the point, if we did not increase the taxes on the taxpayers, would we still have enough revenue to cover expenditures? And I think that answer was yes. So at this time, I will not be able to support the nine point one mil.
Call for the vote.
Over, but it's right in front of you.
I was just saying, I was calling for it.
Mr. Chairman. Let's do it. Yes, Chairman.
I was not at the last meeting. I apologize, but I would like to have some clarification of what Ms. Elkins Johnson just said. That sounds like a really drastically, uh, extreme, uh, response from what I've read. She said, repeat your question and then your response. You got it back again, Ms. Johnson.
Um, initially, I stated that I will not be able to support the nine point one mil. And I said at the last meeting, I asked the question that if we did not increase the taxes on the taxpayers, would we still have enough revenue to cover expenditures? And then I also look and see that we have a thirty million dollar fund budget. So I'm just wondering, I know Ms. Anderson stated that our students will not have the quality education, but based on what I've reviewed, and if I'm wrong, correct me, I think our students will still be able to have that quality, world-class education that District Two has always been a part of.
If you look at the two different budgets and what was cut-
Yes.
It will be, make a difference.
Okay, we got a difference in penny. That's okay.
Let's go, we'll call for the vote. I mean, was Mr. Jackson?
I just spoke. Oh, right in front of you.
I didn't know whether he had something else to say or not.
Which screens are coming up on?
Everybody around you?
No.
He has some technical difficulties, yeah.
Did it come up?
Pass this forward to the third side. Thank you very much for your hard work tonight.
Mr. Bob, excuse me.
Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, you'll recall that next Tuesday, May seventh, at six P.M., County Council has asked millage agencies to make a presentation. I, I told Dr. Brochure that I contacted Daniel Triggers, Director of Finance at County, this afternoon and asked him what form the presentation would be, and quite honestly, he said, "Bob, we don't know." Uh, they're trying to get that from County Council. He thinks it'll be a three-minute presentation or so from our district as to what the budget contains, the high points of the budget, and basically the bottom line. Uh, but he's gonna get back to me as soon as he knows something about any of it. But again, that would be a presentation, uh, next Tuesday at six P.M. with the other millage agencies. I wish I could tell you where we'll be in the list, and I have no idea. Our pledge to you and, and the vote you just passed, we did understand that as with the state legislature, you are giving the staff the leeway to adjust things minutely to, as far as the actual millage and the actual dollar amount that we're going forward with. We will present that. We will put that package together and hopefully, and not hopefully, by Friday, we will have a package for Dr. Brochure's review that she can send to you before we send it to County Council, uh, next week. We're, it's due to be reported by the tenth, which is Friday week, but I take it the board would like to present it to the County Council so that they would have it Tuesday night. We go down to present.
Will you let us know when you want us to be there?
Six o'clock, uh, next Tuesday, May seventh.
That's just first reading. The, the final vote is the third reading.
That's correct, uh, you, for the additional meetings, but the, the next one is just the presentation on the budget.
Mr. Davis, if I can echo, if y'all could just send us a schedule of the meetings so that we can put those in our account.
Oh, yes, sir.
Please do that. And I wanted to make one comment. Um, it seems like everybody talked but me. I basically thought this was more money than I wanted it to be. I was around five or six mills, frankly. So I was uncomfortable. It took me a while before I could vote. But, um, I know when we get to County Council, it gets a little different, so we'll see how that plays out.
Thank you.
Cause I've lived there and done that, so it can change. But, um, at any rate, I want everybody to know that what you need is very important to us, and we certainly understand, and we understand that these are difficult times. We're hiring professionals. We're doing really very advanced and high-tech work. We could be a college for the, you know, what we're doing and how we're doing it. And I'm very, um, aware of that and very sensitive to what our needs are. And, and meanwhile, I understand, I, I read in the paper today that the penny sales tax goes up. I think it's this week.
Tomorrow.
Or for roads, road improvements. So when you go out and, and buy and spend grocery store, it's another penny now. So we went from seven percent now to eight percent. So these are things that we have to deal with, and I agree with Dr. Fleming and Mrs. Specter. Paychecks have not gone up, but living, cost of living expenses have. So it was a difficult decision for me, and, um, I'd like to have seen it a little lower, a lot lower, like five mills. But, um, anyway, we'll see how it plays out, but thank you all for being here.
I don't think there's any, uh, executive, uh, session items tonight. I put that there in case there's something came up. I don't believe anything gets come up. So at this time, um, Mr. Garrett's gonna hand you some, uh, you want, you, I think, you wanna just tell everybody what that is after the meeting? Okay, he's gonna hand you all the envelope, okay, so he's gonna tell you about it after the meeting, okay? Don't, don't leave it. Okay, they're here. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Here, second. Second, second. Mr. Jackson, it'll come up on you, it'll come up on your screen.
I already closed my PCI vote to adjourn. Trust me, I'm not voting.
Be adjourned. Thank you for being here.